So, let us get underway. Welcome everyone to the December meeting of the Saginaw City Planning Commission. If you are here to present a case, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and make your presentation. We may ask you questions for clarity or more information. A simple majority vote of the members present will decide on your request. If you're here to speak in the public comment phase of the meeting, please also come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and direct your comments to the commission. We have no time limit, but brevity is appreciated. Let's begin, as we always do, with the roll.
Stone.
Here.
Zawerko. Nightengale.
Present.
Hanley.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Dolores.
Present.
Taggett.
Nash.
Present.
First item on the agenda, well, actually, second item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. You have minutes from our November meeting.
Move adoption.
Support.
Moved and supported that we approved the minutes. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion. Is there anyone here to speak for the public comment section of the meeting? I do not see anyone. Therefore, let us proceed to new business, which brings us to case number 150095. Mr. Faust, do you have any opening comments, or should we go to our presenter?
Mr. Singh is requesting approval of a site plan to demolish a building at 2714 South Washington that sold Nestle's party store, and construct a new party store at 2718 South Washington. And to represent him tonight is Mr. Austin from Austin and Associates.
Mr. Austin, you have the podium if you want to expand on this for us.
I'm Lee Austin of Austin and Associate Architects. And Mike has kind of put it in a nutshell. The gentleman would like to tear down, there's two buildings there that he owns, tear down one building, build the new building, stay in business-wise building the new building, and then transfer the stock that he has to the new building, and then tear the other old building down. And we've been in contact with city engineering, we've been in contact with MDOT, trying to make this traffic flow the best way that we can, and to try to make this the most pleasing facility for that area in there, which is kind of a corner. There's a city parking lot, city-owned parking lot on the corner, but we propose in-building his own parking lot, and then he will have flow both from Washington and also Gallagher. MDOT would like to close the one entrance to the city parking lot because it's so close to the corner, and the new entrance into Mr. Singh's parking lot is right at the minimum line that the state would like to have it placed from the corner. The building is approximately 3,000 square feet, and we anticipate this going under construction as soon as we get all the approvals.
Do we have questions or comments from?
The new approach, is that directly opposite the new building? I'm looking, I'm looking at some lines here.
Yes, yes, it would be directly in front of the new building.
So, the ones that we were talking about later on, I mean, earlier, that gets closed out?
The new entrance is what MDOT told us they would like to have.
Right, and that is directly opposite the new, the new building?
Yes.
Okay, so, as you, as you go, as you go north, you've got another opening, and that's going to be closed?
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
We would remove the curb, or, for a new curb, remove part of the driveway, and put also a new curb in, and we spaced it so that that last parking space, it'd have room to back out and be able to get into the driving lane.
The existing parking lot now, is the parking lot for his business?
Correct. It's a city-owned parking lot, but that's what's used for the store. That store right now goes from that one lot, it goes from lot line to lot line, like the old stores many hundred years ago did. More than likely, there was another building to the north, another building to the south at one time.
Yeah, we think so.
That was a whole other city back there.
Yeah.
Right. This 1859, this store would possess someone.
Could have been, could have been.
So, basically, the, when all is said and done, the new parking lot will be basically where the current building is?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
But it also covers a little more than that?
Well, it covers more than that, but that's general.
It's more than that, right, right.
I'm not totally comfortable with, or not comfortable, so long, with, what's the, how many buildings are going to be torn down?
Two.
Two. The current, the current building, which is right there, right next to the street?
Correct.
What's the other one?
Yeah, I wasn't clear on that either, and I drove by it, and I wasn't.
Yeah, I did too, and I. The other one sits behind it, and it fronts on Gallagher. It's kind of a metal.
That little square, that little square building?
It's kind of a rectangular building, it's metal.
Okay, but it's separate.
Right.
There's a name on that now, or something?
Uh, it could have been, I'm not sure.
In any case, it's that building, that small building right behind.
Right.
Since this is on in Washington, we have to go around the state setbacks and sign it, and it's quite, we supersede anything that the city has.
Right. We go through the whole checklist.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Faust, you indicated that the purchase of that, of that lot is not finalized yet?
No, the city council at their last meeting approved the sale. A deed has been drawn up and signed. I'm just waiting for Mr. Singh to bring me a check, and then the deed will be recorded at that point. He's also working on, there's a lot to the south of the lot that the city is selling that's owned by the land bank, and I think he's trying to work on the purchase of that one at the same time. I've talked to the land bank, I believe they're willing to sell it. Where they're at in that process, I'm not really sure. I know they made a quote to him on price, and I'm not sure where they're at on that.
Do you know what his reason is for wanting that lot?
Uh, well, see, the one that the city's selling him, I believe, is only 20 feet wide, so it would give him more room. The south part of his parking lot, I believe, is that, that lot that the land bank owns, and possibly even part of the south end of the building.
I would think it would be.
Yeah.
So, this would be contingent on that?
Right. I mean, all we're waiting for is a check from him, and then everything's already signed and ready to go. It has been approved by the council.
So, this, he could do this even without the purchase of 2720 from the land bank?
He could, actually, he has room if he wants to, to build a new store right where the current store is. I think his idea, though, was to build the new one, move all of the inventory to the new one, and then tear down the old one. So, if you decided to approve this plan, you would probably want to put a stipulation in there for how many days he would have to tear the old building down as well, so that we know that it comes down.
But I guess my question is, this can go without purchasing 2720 South Washington from the land bank?
No, I believe he'd have to come back to us with a new plan, because I think that part of this, this plan is on that lot.
We did, we did another layout of site plan without that lot that you're talking about, and it was, the entrance was a little further to the north, and MDOT said no.
So, that's a factor there.
So, then when we had to move the entrance further to the south, that's what triggered buying that lap, that lot from the land bank.
So, that's a necessary thing.
And actually, it made the flow much better than what we had, because it was a, it was a small lot. Granted, he could use the city lot as overflow, but we're, we're trying to get away from that.
Can anyone park in that city lot now for any purpose, basically?
As far as I can determine.
Or, and that's going to continue in the future?
Right.
Okay.
It kind of puzzled me what it was for, but I'm sure that there were other businesses there at one time, and it was used.
Yeah, you had a little downtown back there a long time ago.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, before that lot.
Definitely, recently is the 70s.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Faust, is, does his business have a liquor license?
Yes. Yes, it does.
So, is there going to be any change in the business from this move, or it's going to be the same?
Well, part of my understanding is that he wanted to have more groceries in the store, and the other thing is toward, if I remember right, towards the back of the current store, he sells clothing, and I'm not sure what else is back there, but other, other items other than liquor and beer. He's got clothing that he sells, he's got a few groceries now, and I think he wanted to expand on that.
How does the square footage of the new store compare to the existing one?
Uh, we're larger, but I think probably the old one is somewhere around 2,000, 2,400, somewhere in there, we're 3,000 square feet.
Is he only using the first floor on the system?
Yes.
Doesn't tell me on here, does it, the square footage? Or does it?
It does on the map here, it says 20. On this, it says 26, 28.
Where's that listed?
Right here.
Any further questions?
I'm wondering about landscaping, lighting.
We submitted a landscape plan. I don't know if you got a copy of it, Mike?
No, I don't.
We have a landscape plan and lighting all, all done, completed. We're ready to go to the, the building department for their approval, upon your approval, of course.
Oh, yeah, there was a landscape plan that, leave, move around a little bit. Just walk around a little. Just don't go forward. Keep walking.
Drive along, sensor. Come on.
Must be I'm out of time, huh?
There we go. So, you do have a landscape plan up there in front of you?
Oh, we do?
Nope.
It's a one drawing A2.
Okay.
I've got a, I've got an A2.
I've got an A2, I was so cluttered myself up.
Oh, there are little trees.
Okay, that's all that's different.
So, we do.
What do you got for A2?
Oh, that's along with new grass.
Am I reading that correctly, that there's basically a new sidewalk running on the north end of the property that's separating the existing parking lot? Is that what that is? The sidewalk?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
I guess if I basically wasn't looking at this upside down, I wouldn't have figured that out.
I don't know how you were seeing it that time.
Okay, I see, now, all right. What was your question, Rob?
Well, landscaping, but it is on A2, it's your. There should be a schedule on there also that tells you how many trees, how many bushes.
Yeah, here it is, right over here, plant schedule, legend, yeah. All I have to do is look at it.
I'm sorry.
Any further questions for Mr. Austin?
Sorry, gentlemen. What type of foundation will this sit on?
Uh, it'll have a standard foundation, block, and a spread footing, and then when we come up, it'll be a slab on the top of that, and then we're going to build with stick construction, because we can get more insulation in it, and have a greater energy-saving building. And then it'll have metal siding on the outside, and we've got stone, it'll be nice stone, make it look nice, and.
With a nice decorative stone.
Type of roof will be pitch roof, or what?
It'll be a pitch roof, asphalt shingles.
Well, if there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion for this project.
What was the completion date?
Didn't say one.
Did we discuss that?
No, no.
What do you estimate is the completion date of this project?
I'm sorry.
The completion date?
Uh, well, generally, these take about six months.
Six months?
As soon as we can start. It might take a little longer because of winter months, but we probably start, you know, like mid-January, and probably six months after that we'd be, we'd be done.
Where would go to August should be adequate?
And we have the issue of the demolition of the existing building also, so how do we treat that?
I think that what you should do is after the new building is completed, that there be something in the motion on how many days he has to demolish the old building. I, I think I put in there that 60 to 90 days afterwards to give him time to move his inventory over.
Well, the one thing, the building that he's operating on now, it's kind of a strange situation, I didn't realize this, but once he builds a new one, to transfer the liquor from the old one to the new one, he can't touch it. The contractors can't touch it. The state of Michigan comes in and actually inventories, physically transfers, and then inventories again, so, you know, that's the logistics of it.
That's got to be a factor.
That'd be a factor, yes.
But 90 days still should be adequate, do we think?
After, after we pull a building permit, or 90 days after the, the old one is.
No, no, 90 days for the total time allotted for the demolition, including.
The transfer of all of.
Moving the inventory.
So.
After, after completion of the new structure.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
That, that sounds okay to you?
Absolutely.
Well, that's not, that's not, that's not the complete, complete time schedule, though.
No.
No, 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 demolition, add on.
When, when, when do we start with it, with the complete?
Add on.
Well, Mr. Dolores, why don't you just give us a motion that includes the two things?
You're going to start first of the year, possibly?
I'm sorry.
You, you intend starting at the first of the year?
Uh, we're hoping to, the contractor will have to get his prices together, and actually, to be on the site, it might be mid-January before he gets there.
Well, what about nine months?
Okay.
The final completion, which includes the demolishing of the oldest, the older store, and whatever reconfiguration is needed after that building is torn down. Can you, can you do that in 90 days?
Sounds fair. I think so.
And if it isn't, then let it extend it out.
Right, I mean, we can always come back.
We want to see, have to come back again and go through it again.
Come back and, and present the situation to you if we can't, and, you know, get it done.
Okay, now, will you, now put that in a form we can vote on.
I'm having difficulty talking tonight.
Okay.
So, why don't you go ahead and finish, Jim, I understand, just.
Okay, can I make a question? A move that we approved, case 150095, with the starting date of, I would say, January 15th or about, with the six months for the build.
He's shaking his head.
Can we do that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Six months for the build, and an additional 90 days after that to complete the demolition of the existing building. So, in total, basically nine months.
Motion has been made. Do I hear support?
Contingent upon engineering approval.
Oh, contingent upon engineering approval.
And engineering and MDOT.
And MDOT. Engineering and MDOT, and all city inspectors.
Motion has now been made. Support?
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any further discussion? No. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Likewise, you did the same.
So, we come now to old business, two things. We have now our final version, I hope, I trust we do, of the bylaws, with the changes made that were suggested last time, having to do mostly with Article 1, Section 2, where we made it clear that final approval of, basically, most of the things that we do lies with city council, so that's in there. And so, there we are. I did put on there, adopted tonight, assuming that we would do that, but that can be changed. So.
Mr. Chair, I have two minor, minor things.
Okay.
The middle of page two, the last line of number four, take out one of the befores.
Before, before. We only need one.
And the last line of number three to.
Second page?
Second page.
Where?
The last line of number three, just move that over, so it's in line.
Right there.
Oh.
Yeah.
The last line, yeah. I will take care of that.
Let's call, we're feeling pathetic.
Well, let's have it, right, because, you know, this will probably wind up in the Library of Congress, and when it does, you're going to call me.
What?
What do you like?
What are they going to call you?
So, is this like a redraft of the master plan, or just looking at the bylaws?
This is just the bylaws.
Bylaws.
The master plan comes next.
So, if we adopt these tonight, then we'll start off the new year with following these. I am ready to entertain a motion.
She moved.
Been moved and supported, that we approved this set of bylaws for the operation of our commission. Any further discussion? I will entertain a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I will correct those two things and get it to you once again.
Okay.
And we'll be in business. And that brings us to our second review of the master plan. We already looked at chapters one, two, and three, so tonight, we're going to look at the remaining four, five, and six, and see what we see. Mr. Faust?
Uh, chapter four pretty much just went through the methods of input from the community, and the public hearings that were held, the website that was up, the different blogs that were set up. I think there were some other things along the way. I would imagine that when we get into the public hearings for the new master plan, or the update, that we'll have a lot of these same types of hearings. We'll have the public hearings that are involved, we'll probably have another questionnaire. I believe that the last time, they had a questionnaire online that could be filled out, and I believe we'll probably do that again. A lot of this is up in the air at this point, just because we have some other groups that are willing to help us with some of this, and one of those groups, I believe, we're trying to schedule a meeting for January, that's Michigan State University. They may have some students that are willing to help us with this, and could, could do the questionnaire part, probably set up the website for us, and set up the dates for public hearings. I would imagine that they could handle the majority of that. We're not sure how many people will be involved yet. I mean, the committee that we had before, I believe there were about 15 members. I think that that will probably hold true again, which was a cross-section of the community. But as far as the number of people helping, like Spicer did most of the work the last time, I think that we're hoping that we can do it cheaper this time by having volunteer help from mostly Michigan State University, and possibly from the Michigan Municipal League as well. Now, both of those groups have already looked at the master plan, and none of them see a need to totally rewrite it, because most of what is in this master plan, they, they said they thought was really good. The problem is, is that over the years, we haven't been able to accomplish all of it, and some of the tasks that are in there are ongoing, and will be ongoing for the next 20 or 30 years. So, I think that we'll probably wait until after that next meeting with Michigan State University to see exactly how much support we could plan on from them, and then bring that back to, to the planning commission to make sure that that's okay. One of the things I would suggest is, the survey questions that they asked before are in here, and I'd like you to look those over and see if there's any other questions that you might want to add to the survey.
Well, that answers one of my questions. The other one was, and I may have asked you this before, I don't remember, who picks the working committee?
The best I can tell, I think Stephanie Harden picked most of that committee.
So, in other words, we can decide, or?
I think that we can decide, the city.
I think last, last time through, it was through Stephanie and partially the city manager.
Yeah, I would think so.
It was pretty, it was pretty handpicked.
It included the land bank.
Yep.
It included, I think, three people from the community.
Yeah, actually, you could probably look back and see what they had written down.
Right, it was in chapter one, I believe.
Well, the list is there, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right in the front. Any further questions about chapter four?
Chapter five was on future land use, and there were a few different categories in here that were different than what the zoning classifications are, but I think that most of those can fit into one of the classifications that we have, or a couple of them, like neighborhood opportunity area, which, one of those areas was the fairgrounds. In a case like that, I don't think there's a need to create a new zoning classification. I think that that's one of those areas that, in the original master plan of 2011, they said, "We're not sure what we want to do with this, come up with an idea, and it'll give us the opportunity to allow a variety of things." And I think once those areas are determined, the. And I think once those areas are determined, that therefore we will be able to change it to one of the classifications that we already have.
What is that now? Is that residential?
Right now, it's called R one A, which is residential agriculture. Which allows for-
Is that what it's always been? Well, that's what it was for the fairgrounds.
Since nineteen eighty-one, when there was zoning classifications.
What was it before that?
That, I'm not sure.
Because I think that was all the farm.
Yeah.
It was a farm.
Yeah.
So I think these classifications are fairly good the way they are now.
They, uh, I have some questions about them.
Okay.
Mixed use. Are we saying that is only the riverfront? Or are there other mixed-use areas? I wasn't clear when I read that. When I looked at the map, it looked like it was just a riverfront.
It, overall, it is a riverfront. We, we want to encourage mixed use along the riverfront. But if you look at some of the other zoning districts, um, as an example, some of the commercial districts do allow for residential homes in the commercial area. Maybe not in the same building, but in the same area of the city. So there are other opportunities, but the riverfront is where the most mixed use is. That's where we want it. That's where we're trying to get more mixed use involved in the city.
Also, a question about medium-high-density residential. When you look on the, on the map and the existing plan, that's really pretty spotty. There's not all that much of it. So I wondered why that needs to be a category, really. Couldn't it be-
Because it helps the zoning official, for one thing, to determine what's allowed. You'll see that most of that high-density area is where the high-rises are in the city. And if you just lump that in with another residential area, it really doesn't meet the criteria of that other residential area. I, I know that there's been complaints that the future land use map is very busy with lots of colors, but from the standpoint of zoning and planning, I, I think that it's needed that way. Um, because there are those small areas. The other one that comes to mind, that there are not many now, and actually, there isn't a zoning classification for it, is neighborhood commercial. That's where you've got areas, a good example of that is where Clark Hardware is and the grocery store and the party store and, and the bakery right there. That would be considered a neighborhood commercial area. It pretty much falls into what we allow in our B one district, which is local business. It's the smaller type of businesses that could go in and be surrounded by a neighborhood.
So, so is general business basically B one?
No, general business is B two. And there's not a lot of general business in the city. East Genesee has some, uh-
That looks like about the only place on the map.
There's, there's a few spaces, but there aren't a lot.
Nestle party store. What's that?
Uh, right now, it's zone B one, I believe, or was it B two? B two, which is general business. Now, if you look at that area, and, and I don't know the history of it, like some of the older members of our commission. But, uh, I, I believe that at that point, there were a lot of businesses down in that area. There was a bank there.
There was a hotel there, there was a, yeah, that was a whole different city. Movie theater, there was-
There was a movie theater.
Drugstores, there were, there was a men's clothing store, uh, beauty lotion stores.
All of that.
You had two or three bars in there?
Yep.
Yeah. They had a bakery, you had a couple of restaurants.
I'll make a note of that.
First legal drink was Macactus Bar down there. And they had Alex's across the street, right?
So the general business category fit more that area, because it was a larger business area than you'd find in just a neighborhood.
But I think in all actuality, when you said eight fifty, eighteen fifty-nine, that was another city. That was Salina.
That was Salina.
That was Salina, I'm sure. Because I remember seeing a pic, I wasn't alive then, but I remember where the, where you come down Washington and you're going north and right in front of Nestle's, you can stay on Washington and you can go straight in front of the old bank and collect a V. Right at that V, there was a hotel there. There was a hotel at that corner.
Yeah, I don't remember the hotel.
Yeah, that was a long time ago. The gas station when I was a kid. Yeah. Over by Nestle's, kitty corner from Nestle's. Before you and I were even around, there was a hotel there, right at that corner. And, and down, down in the south end, in Salina.
Uh, urban venture area. Do we, how do we promote that? Or do we promote, do we try to get people to think about this, to?
I think we need to let people know that it's there.
That would be a start.
Yeah, I mean, because I don't know how many people know about that, because the only place it's ever mentioned is right here in the master plan.
So, you know, that's, uh-
But, you know-
That's a lot of space on the map. That is worthy of some effort, more than just putting it on paper.
And, and again, I think that was one of those areas that, when the master plan was done, and I'm only speculating on this, is that, um, that was an area where we had a lot of open ground that at one time was probably industrial, a lot of it. And the industry's gone, what do we do with it?
So that's our question today, even more.
That's a big question. Then you get into all the, all the vacant churches too, and schools with that property.
That's right.
Now, the other thing along that line is, what do we do with that? The other area, and the Michigan Municipal League brought it up in their draft that I just read the other day. Uh, the green area, the green zone. Everybody has a different idea of what the green zone is. Some people say, "We're just gonna clear it." When a big industry wants to come in, there's land for them. Some people think it should go back to being a neighborhood. And some people think that it should really be green and just go back to wild land and, and that we abandon the streets and take them out. And it says that until we decide as a city what we want in that green zone, there's really no reason to go forward with it, because, you know, everybody's got a different idea of it.
Yeah, and, and in fact, you know, we can call it that, but basically, it's just one of the very sparsely populated parts of the city and there's some neighborhood in it, there's a little bit of neighborhood, there's quite a bit of industrial, uh, on the edge of it. And, you know, you could say that about a lot of parts of the city.
Right.
So I agree, we need to, we need-
Quite well described, quite well discussed, uh, five years ago, the green zone.
Yeah, I think it needs to be again.
In honor of all that time, there was a, a housing study done. And that green zone area there was not recommended for housing.
Well, you didn't have to be a scientist to already know that.
Plus, you're gonna have a whole lot more green zone in the wild, the way the population of the city's going. And the schools and the churches and-
Supposed not to be pessimistic?
No, 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 I'm just saying, I'm being realistic, I'm not being pessimistic. I stay in the real world.
I know, most of that green zone was owned by the land bank.
So, are there any further questions on, um, chapter five?
So I'm not seeing any major changes to chapter five.
The only, the only thing I would like to see in chapter five, I think, is, there's a, there's a big discussion about the green zone. It's three or four pages and it seems like there are other areas of the city that ought to have equal space here, certainly the riverfront being one. And, and maybe this whole, uh, urban venture area. Let, let's give some thought to that and put it down on paper so that people at least know we're not just coloring it brown on the map and we're actually thinking about what could be there, what should be there, what incentives might be necessary. Something.
Right.
And certainly, I think too, more on the riverfront, that was only one page.
Well, in this plan that I read from the Michigan Municipal League and Michigan State at the meeting we had, the general consensus from the people that are bred over this is, they think our riverfront mixed-use area is too large. They don't think that there's enough commercial activity or to ever fill in that area as a densely populated walking area.
You just want to condense it down.
So they, they're talking about maybe having a couple of different mixed-use districts, one being around Old Town, one being around Downtown, and possibly another one being around the Covenant Area. To be areas that are more condensed. And then turn some of those other areas in between into commercial districts, but maybe not as, as intense or as developed as what we'd like to have the mixed-use district to be. Those are the ideas that they're throwing out at this point. Um, nobody's sat down and broke down, has broken down the different areas into exact street boundaries or anything like that at this point. But that's one of the things that has come up in, in a couple of meetings and studies that I've read.
Well, it seems like in all the years I've lived here, the riverfront is still underutilized, underfished, underdeveloped.
Underdeveloped, yeah.
You know, there's so many cities that have riverfronts that are just the center of everything going on. And then there's us.
You really can't do that much on the east side of the river, anyway.
Well, we already have a walkway there.
I know you got the walkway, but that's about it.
Well, that's something, at least.
I'm just saying, you can't, you know, you can't build on it. You gotta go to the west side of the river.
You have the, the walkway and you have a jibway and-
Yeah.
And you have a connecting, connection to Downtown. And, and yeah, you know, development on the west side would be great.
And I guess in, in the, the people that these groups have talked to have all said they'd like more connectivity between Downtown and Old Town.
Yeah.
Which has been talked about for a long time with the Riverwalk for one.
We have it on one side, now we need it on the other.
Yeah, the problem on the west side is most of it is privately owned at this point. I know a couple of easements have been obtained over the last few years, but there's still more to go.
Are there a lot of ownerships involved? Is it ten, is it twenty, is it fifty? Any idea?
I would say at least twenty. I don't know that it's as high as fifty, but I'd say it's at least twenty.
So are any of those owners actually using that land or are they just owning it?
Well, if you look at the west side, you've got Megget right on the river. Um, they're using it, they've got a building there. There, um, the Dialysis Center is over there and the Diocese for the Lutheran Church is there.
Yeah.
Which was the old Treasure Island.
Treasure Island. Then you got the electrical company.
Campbell.
Campbell.
Campbell, you've got Mystic Way.
Mystic Way.
You got Heinemann.
Then as you go north-
Director. You got Rifkin.
They go, I think some of the people to, to the south, down around the Corks, because I think they're speculating.
Yeah, I think they're-
They're all speculating on the river down there, what they're gonna do.
But one thing that we did, or the land bank did, is the Dialysis Center on the river was purchased last year by a group in California. And the land bank owned a lot right on the river there and they did sell it to that group. But in the process of doing that, they made sure that there was a, an easement through there for a walkway or a bike path.
Okay, so we at least have that.
So with the Dialysis Center, who owns the whole building or is that split, like, zero outlines or everything?
Uh, it was owned, well, it started out being a condominium project.
Oh, got it.
Three units. That was dissolved and then there were two owners, the Lutheran Diocese and-
Yeah, Dialysis.
The Dia, well, not the Dialysis Center, but another company that owned the building. Now the company from California owns the entire building.
Okay.
They've dissolved the condominium. They own the entire building and they've done a lot of renovation in the last year.
They run into the Panda House down there, too. They just built right, everybody built right up to the river.
Yeah, they sure did that.
So there are some of those places, like on the, where the Dialysis Center is, there is no room for a, for a path between the building and the river.
It's almost like-
It's gonna have to go around there.
Russia's gonna have to, yeah, it's crazy. West side's jammed up.
But there have been some easements obtained in that area.
Who, who owns the property down by, uh, between Genesee, Genesee and down to the theme factory? Who owns all that? That's what I wondered.
Genesee and where?
Genesee down all the west, all the way down, all the way down in front of Rifkin. Who owns that property?
Rifkin. Down to Rifkin.
Down to Rifkin.
Going south along the river from Genesee.
Yeah.
I think you've got several different owners in there.
I think there's, they're still leaving an oil well there, right?
Yeah, there is.
There is.
It's one north of that.
Yeah, there's one down there.
Yeah, one by the Johnson Street.
Yeah. That's pretty crazy.
Yeah, that's attractive.
Let's use that income to finance-
Put a picnic table next to the oil well, gee, that's a pleasant afternoon.
That's what they try to do with Dinock Woods.
It might have an oil well.
So, chapter five, anything else? Burning in your brain?
So it would be nice to try to clarify some of those areas a little better than what's described here.
Good. We'll have that in mind as we get into it.
Now, chapter six is the action plan and how we're going to do all of these projects. And of course, a lot of this has changed in the last five years. One thing, when this plan was written, there were four people in planning and zoning. Right now, there's one. The other thing is lack of funds, which is somewhat described in here, that as, as we can, we'll do some of these things. As I went through the checklist, I saw that a lot of the projects in there have been started and there have been things done on it, but they're not complete. And I'm, as I look at it, I'm not sure that any of them will ever be totally complete, because one of them was the corridor, the Holland Remington corridor from the city to Downtown to City Hall. And what it asks for is that that area, a lot of that was zoned industrial in the past and they wanted to get rid of the industrial that's there. Well, you've still got a couple of industries operating there and we don't want to take them out and tell them that they can't expand or anything. Some of those areas have been worked on. I remember for years, right at the city limits, the first house you saw had no windows in it, no, it was a really bad house. That house is gone. A lot of those houses have been torn down. A lot of the grants that we've gotten over the last few years to tear down houses, a lot of that money was earmarked for residential properties only, so we still have some commercial and industrial buildings that could be torn down, but there aren't the funds to do it yet. And some of those are still in private ownership. So those are things that I think you work on over time as, as you can. This seems to be going on more often. The other thing, the Michigan Municipal League, the study that they did, they felt that there were a lot of groups working in the city to do things to help the city, but a lot of those groups were overlapping and doing the same type of thing and not communicating with one another. And they- And they thought that we could do a lot better if these groups were communicating. I think that they mentioned, uh, either the Community Foundation, Saginaw Future, and the City Council. Get all of these groups together and try to get them to work more in unison. Like, there's a couple of people in Old Town and Downtown trying to work on things along the river, but they don't really communicate between each other.
That would be a good idea.
And so, that was one of their suggestions. I think maybe we'd accomplish more if we could get these groups together. There's another example with wayfinding signs. There was a group of mostly nonprofit organizations that pretty much had some ideas together on what, on doing a river loop with signs, pointing out all the cultural activities around the river, the river loop. And now, all of a sudden, there's another group like that that's been meeting for the last year. That I think came about when Dow Chemical, uh, just had renaming rights for the Dow Center. And they said, "Well, we wanna do this, but we wanna try to market the city as well." And so, another group was formed to do that same thing. And there's been no communication between those groups. So, I think that that was one of the good things that they pointed out. A lot of these other things, as you can see, there's a checklist by years back here. And also, Chapter 6 includes the survey questions that were asked before.
Just look, looking back at what you said about the groups, wasn't it one of the people from the city that tried to get all the groups here to talk about what they were doing?
That happened a couple of times. That was, the DDA was kinda heading that. When the Bennett left, I think that that dropped.
That dropped, yeah. They tried to get everybody here to talk. They brought all the different organizations and said what they did, what they were trying to accomplish. They were trying to get some conversations going, but the other person left, and that was it.
And, and some of those meetings were pretty well-attended. There were forty, fifty people, or something.
Oh, yeah.
In the, uh, Action Program section of the new plan, can we have, uh, this list and that with comments on where we are on those? So that people know, this is what we said in the last plan, what are all our goals were, and this is where we are in meeting those.
Yeah, I don't see why not. I think that'd be a good idea.
That would be a good thing to know.
Right. To show that there has been progress made.
And to justify the fact that, uh, our numbers still need to be worked on. Still need to-
Right.
Find the funding.
And again, most of these items that are on these checklists are, are things that I think we still wanna work on.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of some of them are gonna take longer than we initially thought they would take. And some of them are, are listed, they've gone out to other areas of the city, like in the Streets Department. And to tell you the truth, I'm not sure where we are on some of those projects.
So, that would be, uh, good for us to know, anyway.
Now, just so you know, I did send a list last week to Beth London, mostly on Chapter 2, uh, the statistics, to have her do the parts on the infrastructure to get us an update on that. So, I, I told her, I gave her a date of, I believe, in April to try to get back to us with that information. So, they can work on that.
Good.
So, I think for the next meeting, I'm assuming everybody's read this and has a pretty good idea of what's in it, is maybe go through the survey questions. I mean, there's pages and pages of comments. And just see if anything really jumps out at you, like, hey, this was a good idea that we missed, or maybe this is a time for it. The other thing is maybe to go over the questions that are in Chapter 6 that were in the survey, and see if there's anything else that you wanna add, or if you think we can delete some of these. And I'm hoping that by the next meeting, that maybe we will have met with Michigan State University again and get an idea of what they can do and the timetable to get it done.
So, you're really, you're actually not gonna hire a firm like you did the last time, hopefully?
I don't think so. I mean, there's a lot of things that need to be updated here. But I think that somebody that knows where to find some of the census data and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, looking at this from the last time we did this, that's, a set of eyes from someplace else, not from here, might help us out better. You know, 'cause if they know what, they know other cities, what other cities are doing, and not just here.
There is value in that, for sure.
One of the other things that I think I read somewhere in the master plan was changing some of our zoning ordinances as well. Michigan State talked about, uh, as an example of one that they thought was good, was El Paso, Texas. And I looked at that one the other day. They have a matrix drawn up of, you pick a use, and, and I'm not sure that's the best way to handle it, but for each use, it went through all of their zoning districts and said whether it was allowed, prohibited, allowed with special approval. And it gave you an idea, there was, you know, I mean, it was 11 or 12 pages long, and you had to pick the right wording for the topic that you wanted. But it gave you a real good overview of what was allowed in different areas of the city.
Yesterday, uh, I looked at the zoning plan to see what it said about party stores, convenience stores, liquor stores, and I never found anything.
There is not anything with those-
In, in connection with the Nastell store, you know, I just wanted to see if it was, yeah, it's right there, it's approved for that.
The way it is worded is a retail operation with all business conducted within the building.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's, that's not all bad. That's in part what form-based code is. It's not so much what's in the building is how that building looks and how it works with the community as far as walkability goes. The general idea of the, of the Michigan Municipal League and Michigan State University is that we want a community that's more walkable, not as many parking lots, because there won't be a need for as many lots. And, and I think that that can, you know, that seems to be the new plan. Back in the 1950s, when there were more highways being built, more automobiles being used, they called that the Euclidean view of zoning. And that's where you took all the industry, put it in this part of town. All of the businesses were in this part of town. All the residences were over here, and everybody drove through cars between them. Well, I think we're finding over the years that we can't support that infrastructure. And maybe the people in the 1800s had a better idea, where they lived above the business. There were ten businesses on a block because you had narrow fronts, and they went deep. And if they didn't live above the business, they lived within walking distance, two or three blocks away. And I think that's the way that planning is getting back to, to make cities so that they are more walkable. So, I think that that's where those groups are headed, anyway, on trying to direct us.
And that's where some of these districts-
Right.
-come up to.
I saw interesting-
Mixed use.
You know, talk about districts, when you get into housing. Like, you go down to the, some of the, the real high-end suburbs around, like, Atlanta, and what they had to do with all the big houses that were going up to, you know, half-million dollar, million-dollar homes. In their zoning, they had to have special sections for where the regular people lived that would service the rich people. I mean, like, the police, fire, people that work for the county.
Yeah. That's every resort towns, I mean.
Well, though, this is just suburb. I know, but it resort towns.
Anything further for the meeting tonight? If not, we are adjourned.